All right, well, welcome back. So last week, we got to the beginning of chapter three, and so we'll start there. I want to start by just reading the prayer again that starts chapter three, and then we'll jump into what we work. So let us pray. "All embracing God, you chose to leave the first disciples and us with a meal as a foretaste of the heavenly banquet we will enjoy in the presence of Jesus. You also gave us the gift of mealtime as a way to connect with ourselves, our family, and our friends. May we receive this gift from you with open hands." Amen. Okay, so, talking about mealtime. And one of the things that the author talks about in this chapter is Jesus eating meals, and how much trouble he got in for some of the meals he ate. And why do you think Jesus faced so much criticism for who he chose to eat with? Why do you think that was such a big deal?
I feel like the Jewish people have more rules or rituals around eating. Like, I don't know that much about the Jewish faith, but I know someone I was talking to was talking about how now they have like, you know, can only use these pans with meat and these other dishes with like bread and milk. Like, they can't mix them, and if something contaminates it, you gotta bury it in the backyard. And so, I feel like the whole idea of contamination maybe was more thought about more on a regular basis and about, so if you're eating with people that are from a different class or a different, like, not deemed as being acceptable, then they feel that like Jesus is being contaminated by that. Like, that, I feel like, you know, we kind of experienced that with the whole pandemic. Like, you know, constantly, like, I never worried so much about contamination in my life as like during the pandemic. But before that, I didn't really think that much about it, you know. But I think that, you know, instead of the people being accepting of these people that were different or unworthy, then they wanted Jesus to feel that those people were unworthy too.
Sheri, were you gonna say something different than that?
I was gonna say that he ate with people that were shunned, that, you know, the Pharisees and stuff, they would never even touch or speak to some of those people. Jesus, you know, healed them, ate with them, showed compassion.
Yeah, one thing that was really important in Judaism of that era was cleanliness. And not in the same terms as we think of it today. It wasn't about, do I see germs? I mean, germ theory hadn't been developed yet, but it wasn't about, is there dirt on it? It was ritual cleanliness. Is this something that is considered clean or considered unclean? And that's one thing when it comes to food. You know, certain foods are clean and unclean. Certain ways of cooking are considered clean, unclean. But then it went into, certain people are unclean. And Jesus was crossing those boundaries. And we don't know if he crossed the boundaries of cooking with the wrong pan or not, but he definitely crossed the boundaries of eating with the wrong people, you know, in terms of that. And certainly, and the Pharisees were strict adherents to every part of the law in a way that the average person wouldn't have been. But to them, it was a big deal. And what do you think meals signified in those days? Think about what meals can signify today, like, who you're eating with, where you're sitting and stuff. Can that symbolize?
Yeah, lots of it.
It can.
I think it also symbolized, like, your power, your level in the community or whatever. The higher up, they sat, you know, more to the front. Poor people probably sat in the back on the floor.
Uh huh, yeah, quite literally, yeah. Yeah, there was a lot of, I mean, a lot of things even today are about status. And meals were considered in those days to absolutely about status. You invited the right people, you got invited to the right places, and you sat where you were supposed to. You know, if you were important, you sat up at the front. If you weren't, you sat down at the back. And if not, you were gonna be told to move if you were in the wrong place.
The slaves just eat in the kitchen.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's...
Of what was left.
Yeah. Yeah, and there was, I know there's, there used to be a show in the BBC called Upstairs Downstairs that was about, you know, life in a house that had many servants. And it was the difference between, you know, the noble people who lived upstairs and the servants who were downstairs. So, on page 55, first full paragraph on 55. "Meals to Jesus were not about status. They were about gathering to share and receive the love of God. Who most needs that love? Perhaps it wasn't those who were working the hardest to be close to God, but those who hadn't even been allowed to try." What do you think about that, those who hadn't even been allowed to try?
The others didn't deem them good enough. Like the slaves in the kitchen.
Uh huh.
Who wouldn't have allowed them?
Well, kind of just...
The lawyers, maybe?
Yeah, and in a way, you know, the culture. I mean, you know, you know, think about, think about the South during Jim Crow. You know, who was it who didn't allow black people to eat at the table? Was it any particular person, or was it just everyone? You know, I think it might have been that, but certainly, the Pharisees would have been vocal about it for sure. That's a good question.
I think maybe they were so busy working that they maybe didn't have time to even think about, you know, whether they wanted to know God or not. I know the slaves in the South were very religious. That really helped them through a lot. But I don't know about back in the Roman days.
Nobody talked to them, so how would they even know probably about God? You know, unless somebody overheard something and pulled it to each other.
What do you think might fit into that category today? People who haven't even been allowed to try to be close to God. Might, they might not be exactly the same, but what, you know, what types of people might struggle with that today?
Well, I feel that there's some people that are never even exposed to God. Like, their parents didn't go to church, they didn't go to church. Like, a lot of us just grew up in the church. And it's, you know, whether you choose or choose not to go to church. But some people have never gone to church, so they don't even get that opportunity or know, you know, what it's like to even try to have that opportunity.
It's an interesting time we're living in. It's the first time in generations where there's, you know, a whole group, a whole generation growing up who has no idea what church is, no clue. Like, it's, we haven't experienced that. We haven't practiced how to evangelize to those people. So, yeah. And it's not, I don't think it's anything malevolent on our part. We're just, we just don't know how to do that and don't even think of it a lot, so.
When I, two years ago, I started writing out the business cards for the pump clientele, but I'm allowed to put Prince of Peace, that the cards are in Prince of Peace, in there. And we supply them, so why, but that might be the only word of a church I even ever get.
Could be. And how could we, and this isn't, I'm not asking us to do a brainstorming session now, but maybe that would be worthy of doing sometime. You know, how could we reach out to that group of people? You know, I don't know the answer to that.
Send an invitation or something, but yeah.
Yeah, I don't know the answer.
Well, I feel like over time, the church has become more accepting of people. Yet, we're in a time now where so many people don't go to church. So I feel like, I mean, like, I grew up in a Catholic church. I feel like they were, you know, it was a problem, if you were divorced, you know, if you were, if you were living with somebody and you weren't married, you know, you couldn't go to communion. If you were divorced, if you were this, if you were that, if you were gay, if you were, like, there's so many, you know, you're not welcome, or you're not, if you're here in church, you can't receive communion because you're, you know, you sinned. So I feel like the church, the church over time has ostracized so many people that now that the church is willing to accept those people, I feel like there's such a history of being ostracized that I feel like those people, you know, would feel like they're not welcome, even if church is saying they are welcome. You know, mixed interracial marriage, I mean, there's a time where you couldn't marry somebody from another race, or you got arrested if you married somebody from another race. So, there's such a history of different people not being welcome, you know, that I can't blame them for feeling like God doesn't love them, you know, when society is saying God doesn't love them.
And I agree with you 100%, and I think the church has come a long way. But I don't think the entirety of the church has come, that, there still are certainly churches out there where people are not welcome.
Right.
And unfortunately, they're the ones that they get in the news for.
Right.
So if you, so not only are unchurched people, you know, feeling like, well, you know, there's such a history of that, but as far as they know, it's still like that, because that's all they're hearing.
That's true.
Because the news doesn't tend to report on, hey, you know, local church welcomes somebody who doesn't look like them. That doesn't get on the news.
Right.
I know, years ago, when my aunt and uncle got married, he had assigned papers that the children would be Catholic.
Yeah.
And we'd probably all been to a Catholic wedding where you weren't allowed to take communion. You know, if they had that in a wedding or for even funerals.
I think I read where the Pope was being more inclusive in the people that are welcome, but then the practitioners didn't like that either, so they're giving him a hard time about it. So, change is hard, too.
So what would it look like to make space for, you know, for people like this at the table, at our table?
It would look like a patchwork quilt, like, it was all supposed to be in the world anyway. That's often a comparison to a patchwork quilt world.
And that's different than a melting pot, you know. Usually, I used to hear all about how America's the great melting pot. And they don't talk about that so much anymore, because what a melting pot is, is it turns everything into the same. But a patchwork quilt brings justice-making people together. But you keep your individuality in a patchwork quilt, unlike in a melting pot where you, yeah. So that's, I think that's a great image, a great image of what the church did be, you know. And I think what we do with pump is a step in that direction. I think, you know, we may not deliberately welcome people to our table, but we share our food that way. And that's, I think that's a real step that, that way, that we do that, you know.
And we make them feel welcome.
And how do you mean by that? You mean, like, if someone were to walk in the door here, you mean, or?
Yeah.
That is true, this church, and I, because I always check that with people. Because I, you know, the one group of people who really has no authority to say if you're welcoming or not are the inn group. We, you know, we can say we're trying to be welcoming, but we can't say we're welcoming, because we don't know. But I have spoken with visitors and with people as their new members, and they reflect that. You know, they said that exactly, and they have...
Now, it was July, your friends were running up a husband?
Yes.
You know, I think she felt very...
They did. And I spoke to them about that exact question, yeah, they sure did, you know.
And they'll always does.
And, you know, we continued that even after they left, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I have to contact us, see how many of these they made.
Yeah, welcoming's a big part of that. What else? What would it look like, you know, if we were to try to have a patchwork quilt table? What would that, what would that look like?
All nationalities. You'd learn a lot.
Sort of what you've got here.
Other churches and different age groups.
Hey, what we're doing on Sunday is a step in that direction too. You know, saying that, you know, we want to celebrate with our friends down on 6/11 by canceling our worship, you know. And we recognize that's gonna, you know, we're gonna lose a little momentum that way. We're probably, you know, our offering will, you know, take a bump for that, but we think that's worth it. That's worth it.
I think being there is more important to them too, to make them feel special.
And it's not, you know, it's not quite the same as welcoming, you know, the outsiders, but it is, you know, saying that there's an openness here, that we don't, you know, we're, our table has loose edges, not strict edges, which I think is a good thing. And I will tell you, the person who was most shocked by that, that I've talked to, was my father. Because he just, he just said like, I do not ever remember a church doing that. He was shocked and delighted, but he was shocked that we made that decision.
Will he be available on Sunday, or?
He's gonna be there, yeah.
Oh, good.
My mother's not gonna be there, because there's steps there that she's just not comfortable with, but he'll be there, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like we're not gonna be there, but we already had our trip booked before I found out about that. That we're gonna try to schedule around.
There's always something. So let's shift gears a little bit. One other thing that she talks about here is how more and more people, you know, eat their meals at home, and more people are eating meals alone. Because, you know, life is so fast-paced, it's just like, that ends up being easier than settling into a, you know, a big, you know, open long meal. And yet, rates of loneliness have increased. And why do you think that is?
There's nobody to have a conversation with. You know, 69 News at 6 o'clock is not a conversation. I mean, they don't talk back to me.
Yeah.
Me too.
But, yeah.
You can yell at them all you like, but...
Sometimes even if you have, you're sitting down as a family, you know, people are like in their own world, or they're staring at their phones, watching TV, you know, so be present. Sometimes I'm like glad to sit down by myself and eat. You know, because I'm so hectic at work, and then I go over, you know, my daughter and the kids, you know, they're running around and crying and stuff. It's nice just to, you know, a little, something to eat and read, or work on the soldier cards or something for a while.
If I cook something, like, I plan on making chili this weekend. Well, you make chili, you know, have to add this and this. So then the bigger meals, with the one-dish meals, I'll take some fruit or cookies or something, take it to my neighbor.
And that's a way of sharing a table. It's not quite the same, but it's a way of doing it. When you eat by yourself, I find, I eat a lot of meals by myself, especially lunch. And, but I find I'm never fully present with the food. If I'm eating by myself, I'm always reading or something else. Usually, I'm reading, you know, the newspaper or something like that. Do you find that's true too, or what do you do when you eat alone?
Watch TV.
69 News at noon and 69 News at 6:00.
Yeah.
Those are like my meal companions.
What would it be like if we would actually be fully present with the food? And I'm not challenging you as though I'm any better, like I said, you know, but what would that be like, I wonder?
You might appreciate the taste, or if you actually made something, you know, other than grabbing something, you'd be thankful for the time that you had to make it, and it tastes better.
I think my husband is always present with the food, because he always tells me how good it is.
That's nice.
That's what my neighbors said, that anything you bring down is good. I don't know, I, you know, I think they're just glad to have a cooked meal, because I don't think she cooks, and he has, if he can't put it in the microwave, he doesn't have, you know. But I taught, I told him how to make an egg and a baked potato and stuff in the microwave, but that was some time ago. I don't think he does that anymore.
I think it's hard to come up with ideas when you're alone too. You know, just, what am I gonna eat now?
And I won't take any time to prepare food for myself. Like, if I'm eating by myself, it's a sandwich or something as simple as that. Like, I'll, microwave is fine, but like, if it takes me longer to make it than to eat it, I'm not interested. I'll cook for my family, I'll spend time, but not for myself. It just feels like a waste of time. And I don't, and maybe that's me missing out on something. Maybe there's a presence of preparing the meal that I could appreciate more, you know.
I have a habit of like, oh, I'll buy some chicken breasts, and I'll make this and that for myself. And then I get home, I'm like, I feel like making it, and then I grab something quick out of the freezer. And then it's like, oh, I have to make that today.
It's nice to have leftovers too.
I was gonna say, when you get, sometimes a meal, I, like, I was out, I actually had a steak dinner last week, right away, in half.
Yeah.
When a waiter comes, you know, they say, need anything else? Yeah, you might as well bring me a box.
Bring it already, yeah.
But then that's a good meal, but you don't have to...
Yeah, I've learned to, I've learned to focus on the foods that would not make good leftovers. Like, I've learned, like, you finish your salad in the restaurant, because that's not gonna be good. You finish, you know, certain things. But, yeah, the meat, yeah, take the hickap of that home.
Well, I don't really like to eat out, because I'm alone, so just to go out to eat by myself, unless I would go out with somebody, you know, friends, something like that.
Yeah, I don't go out by myself, although...
Some people do. That's a thing we say.
I have already, when I was divorced and, you know, yeah. But, you know, a local diner or something, yeah.
No, I haven't done it yet. My mom said before, it's too bad, you know, like, places like a local diner or something doesn't have like a reserved table that just says, you know, for people who want to meet new friends and...
How would we meet?
And then if you're a single person, or even if you're not single, you're just happen to, you know, be out and about, and it's a plate, it would be like, I personally have, if we're, not frequently, but once in a while, if we're in a restaurant and we go to sit down and somebody's sitting by themselves, I've actually asked them, would you want to join us? And most of the time, they just say no. But I think, I think people are afraid to intrude on someone else. But if you had a table in a restaurant where you were encouraging people to sit there if they want to sit with other people, and you could make new friends and, you know...
And it would be totally opt-in, like, if you didn't want that, you didn't sit there. That's a neat idea, yeah.
So like, the other weekend, at Quiet Valley Farm for Harvest Festival, they have picnic tables set up there. And you, you know, somebody's not taking up the whole table, so if there was a spot, and I said, oh, you know, do you mind if I sit here? And the people across the, you know, I asked them where they were from, and they said they had moved two years ago from Asheville, North Carolina. So I was like, you know, you said we were talking about, you know, some of that, but like, I never would have gotten a chance to talk to them if I hadn't just asked to sit down, like, at that space, you know. And some people, some people, you know, don't like, don't like to be the one asking to share a table with somebody, and other people, you know, aren't interested in having somebody join them. But, but, and I could see why a restaurant wouldn't want to set aside a whole table for that, but, but it would be a cool idea, you know, if restaurants did that, where you could, single people, like, people coming in to eat by themselves could join other people if they wanted to, so.
Instead of sitting at the barstool at the counter, that's what a lot of single people do.
Yeah, but even that's not...
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Like...
You don't, you don't know if that person wants to have conversation with someone else or not. Whereas if you had that table, you'd know, that's why they're open to that.
Well, how long did it take us to get Wilma to join us for breakfast? She'd always go, she'd get there first, she'd always sit in the booth. Come on over, sit with us. Yeah, yeah. And then, who do we write the card out to? Oh, for Donna, at the hostess, the trolley wasn't in for a while, so I brought a card for the table to sign. And then, she was with us that day. No, I'm not a regular, you know, I'm not, I'm, I said, do you go to Prince of Peace? She said, yes, and sign the card.
But, yeah, meals can, can, you know, either deliberately or inadvertently like that, kind of become viewed as kind of like a, you know, and we're in and we're out kind of thing, you know. It's, you know, I'm sure you did nothing to deliberately do that, but...
Yeah, she's just always been, I mean, I've known her, you know.
Lunch tables in school, we're definitely in a you're in or you're out kind of thing. Like, where kids sit with their friends, and then some kids you see in the cafeteria just sitting by themselves, like, not by themselves one day, but as a teacher, you walk in the cafeteria, and every day, you see some of the same kids sit by themselves, and, you know, like, that's, I don't know.
Kind of probably wasn't by choice in a lot of cases.
Probably not. I think sometimes to the family table can be a good thing, but it could also be a negative thing when parents are like, okay, how did you do in school today? Why didn't you get an A? Why, how come you're not studying? Da-da-da-da-da, you know, all those kinds of things, that can happen.
It's intense either way. It's either intense good or intense bad, yeah, yeah. All right, anything else about this chapter before we move on? Anything else that jumped out at you, or you'd like to take a minute to talk about? The cadence of the kitchen?
I like the line that said, when we eat together, we offer each other who we are, quirks and all.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, this isn't the meal table, but, you know, you chalk it, well, even, we've had our go-for-breakers group for how long? And, you know, we miss it.
How many are you now? You're a big crowd.
Uh, sometimes there's three or four, sometimes there's nine or 10. You never know.
But even here, what is, you know, not here today, but what's usually here with us? There's food, you know, and coffee. You know, there's something about that that, you know, brings people together and...
It can open a conversation.
It does, it does.
Oh, homemade cookies today, or, you know, yeah.
And I like, I think somewhere in here, it's, it's, it's been a while since I've read this, because we're going, you know, slower than I expected, but I think it says something in here about when you're eating, you can't be talking, like, that forces you to listen.
Quiet, yeah.
I think there's something to that, too.
I underlined that, it was on page 61, it says, when my mouth is busy eating, I'm twice as likely to listen.
Yeah.
I thought that was pretty cool. And you notice it, like, especially if you're somewhere where there's, everybody's being served at once. Like, you're at, you know, like, a wedding or a banquet or whatever, and it's very noisy. And then, all of a sudden, it dawns on you that it all got like very quiet, because everybody's eating, you know, but...
And it becomes easier to see who's the bigger talker by, who still has 3/4 of their meal on the plate when everyone else is done with it, you know?
Yeah, that's true. I will say, my husband is the slowest eater I've ever had. And like, no matter what meal we eat together, I'm always done. And I'm a, and I admit, I'm a fast eater. I was a teacher for 33 years, and you're always wolfing down your lunch to go make copies or run to your mailbox, or go talk to somebody about a student or something. And so, so I just eat fast. There are times when I feel like I'm eating fast, but there's other times, I don't feel like I'm eating fast, but I do eat fast. And he's completely the opposite. So when our kids were younger, you know, kids are slow eaters, so they actually ate slower than him. But now, of course, we're back to, you know, like, for a long time that he's slow. And then if you eat something... And, and then if you eat something that takes long, like crab legs, where you gotta sit there and like crack them all open, it's like a multi-hour deal. And I just sit there and I, like, he joked one time, he's like, oh, he's like, I wonder if he could add up all the hours that I've spent waiting for him to finish eating. But, but there'll be times like if he, you know, he gets home so late from work and he'll come to church for a meeting and then he won't get home till like nine or nine-thirty, and he hasn't eaten dinner yet. And so then, um, I usually try to have something there for him, but I'll, I'll usually sit there with him while he eats, even though I'm like eight long ago, so, but, um, but it's interesting. And there's not, there's, you know, there's no speeding him up. He just has this slow pace when he eats.
I'm a slow eater, I'm always the last one to leave the table.
Me too.
I don't care.
I don't care. Now, when I'm eating alone, I don't even know if I pay attention to what I'm eating, actually, to tell you the truth, because then I wanna get it over with maybe, I don't know why.
Well, yeah, and then you have the people that, if you're with somebody in, in their home, you're still, they're, they're clearing their side of the table and, you know, you're just finishing up your pork chop or whatever you might be eating, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess eating together also, you know, forces us to accept other people where they are, you know, cause it's so different, yeah.
I think I pay attention more to the food when it's something new, something different. I feel like we kind of, there's foods that we like and especially when our whole family would eat together, you know, this person didn't like this food, that, or, so we, we kinda ate a lot of the same foods all the time. But now when you experience something different, you're somewhere, somebody, somebody made something different that you get to try, or you're at a restaurant and you're trying something you haven't had before, I think that's when I pay attention to food more, when it's not the same food that we eat like all the time, but.
Yeah, I think I've heard that you should pay attention, be mindful of what you're eating and, cause sometimes if you're not, you're just like, shh, I'm ready.
Yeah, I mean, just, just to watch your intake, that's, yeah. I mean, the worst thing is, is sitting in front of the television with a bag of potato chips. Especially if it's the bag, like not a bowl what you made, but just have the bag there. You can eat a whole bag and not even notice.
Where did that go?
Well, here's where it all went.
You have to learn portion, you just take some out, put the rest back in the cupboard. It might be two cookies in there, pack, you know, eat one, but if you're having a cup of it tomorrow.
But, but you gotta be mindful to do that, if you're, if you're not thinking, you can just.
When you're watching, yeah.
Yeah, if you look at the bags, you know, I've been really, you know, watching things and, uh, you know, it's like, how many chips can you eat? You know, like, I, you know, like, oh, fifteen, okay, but then, sit, I sit there now, and I sit and count before I would sit there, I'm like, oh, we ate a hundred.
A serving is eight crackers or whatever, yeah, yeah.
Well, the, the, the topic of this chapter was that the holy rhythm of mealtime reminds us of the importance of receiving and sharing the love of God. And then mealtime is, is reflective of that, so, so I invite you to take a minute, um, and, um, you know, write down what, uh, what would you hope to bring from, from this chapter, from this reflection, um, what would you like to bring with you? Then we'll move on. Excited about the next chapter, Mary? I was gonna make some reference to you, yeah.
I thought about you.
Yeah, I think we all did, yeah.
We, we've all got our thing, if there was one about the rhythm of coffee, you'd all look at me, and if it's about shopping, we'd all look at you.
It's funny though, it says, they try to find a good coffee shop.
Oh, there you go, there you go.
So you're in your.
I am.
There's no coffee shops around here.
I mean, every time I go past that empty place down here, I think, why didn't you get that for the church? And how, you know, for people coffee, and then we can have like our book club down there, and, you know.
I tell Jackie, she should, for pop's treasures.
Pop treasures.
She'd have to be open every, every day though.
Kim sing about the table, the, you know, meet me people table.
What place are you talking about?
It used to be like a.
Same question. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I was even thinking it'd be cool, you know, on like something like Thanksgiving or Christmas, where you had a, instead of having your dinner at home, you had it somewhere, somewhere out of church or something, and invited people that weren't sharing holidays with, e- e- even if it's, even if it's just, like, our holidays are really small because even though I have other family, you know, there's reasons why we don't get together with a lot of other people. So it's usually just the four of us and my mom, or if the kids aren't around, it's Jim and I and my mom, or whatever. But others, so even, so even if somebody's not sharing it, like even if you're not just alone, but you're a couple or whatever, but you want other people to gather with, it would be kinda cool, but.
When I was at St. Stevens in Allentown, they, they did that every year on Thanksgiving. And it was, it was partially, you know, to offer a free meal for those who, you know, couldn't afford Thanksgiving. But there weren't that many people who came with that reason. It was mostly people who just really wanted to be together with other people. It was, um, people who didn't need it financially, but needed it emotionally, you know, it's a good thing.
Come up to it like a potluck then, where everybody like brought something and.
But it meant, it meant a lot to people to be together like that, yeah. All right, well, as Mary informed us, the next chapter is the tempo of transactions, the holy rhythm of shopping.
Yeah, I wanna know what your favorite stores are.
So let's, let's, uh, let's start by opening the Bible and we're gonna read, um, a story here. And then we open the Luke chapter eighteen. Read this and then a devotion and a prayer. And I found that this chapter went in a somewhat different direction than I expected, and that's where this, this story comes in. So Luke chapter eighteen, we're gonna read verses one through eight, and let's do it, uh, the way we've been doing it. I'll start and then we'll go around. Then Jesus told them a parable about their need to pray always and not to lose heart.
He said, in a certain city, there was a judge who neither feared God nor had respect for people.
In that city, there was a widow who kept coming to him and saying, grant me justice against my opponent.
For some time he refused, but finally he said to himself, even though I don't fear God or care about men.
Yet because this widow keeps bothering me, I will grant her justice, so that she may not wear me out by continually coming.
And the Lord said, hear what the unrighteous judge says.
And will not God grant justice to his chosen ones who cry to him day and night? Will he delay long in helping them?
I tell you, he will quickly grant justice to them, and yet when the son of man comes, will he find faith on earth?
So Jesus tells a parable about a persistent widow who petitions a judge every day for justice. We're told that the judge neither feared God nor had respect for people. And, and, and my favorite part of this story is when he actually just says, even though I do not fear God or have respect for people, you know, I, I love that he emphasizes that. Anyway, yet this woman approached him daily and did not give up. In a day and time when women did not have much power and widows were largely dependent on others, this persistent widow pressed on until she wore the judge down. He relented, not because he had a change of heart, but because he was tired of her making the request. So justice is something we have to pursue, it doesn't just happen. And the rhythms and routines of our society are not always inclined toward justice. In chapter four, as we think about the rhythm of shopping and of our transactions, we're invited to consider what it would look like for us to become persistent people who do not give up. We're invited to choose a rhythm of intentionality rather than convenience. When it comes to the things we purchase, we have so many quick and inexpensive options at our fingertips. Sometimes widespread availability is a help to us. Sometimes our circumstances don't allow us to do anything else. The answer is not always as easy as shop local, not online. Instead, as we consider the story of the persistent widow, we're invited to ask what it would look like for us to be pursuers of justice in an era of convenience. Let us pray. God of justice and compassion, it is easy for us to be impatient people in a fast-paced world. In this moment, and as we read this book, offer us the gifts of intentionality and peace. Grant us space to, space to breathe and to pause. Help us to become pursuers of justice and people who build up a community of sharing and partnership. Amen. So imagine that your favorite author is releasing a new book, and the big day has finally arrived and the book's been released. So how do you get, do you order the book online or maybe even preorder it so it comes that day? Do you buy the book from a local bookstore? Or do you wait for the book to be available as an ebook from the library? How would you get it?
Preorder.
Mm-hmm.
Depends how much I wanted it.
Okay.
I don't think I ever pre-ordered anything, but.
I'd probably wait till, yeah, it comes out in soft cover and it's cheaper or get it from the library. Borrow it from somebody else, yeah.
Yeah, used, used book, yeah.
Well, you can't get a used book if it's, it just came out, but yeah.
You'd have to wait.
Well, I mean, wait, wait till somebody reads it, places it on.
Yep.
I use audiobooks, so.
Sherry got this one online, that's why it's all written in. That's okay, because it tells me when I can make out what they've written.
Yeah.
Things in here.
So why, why did you choose the shopping method you did?
Cause it was my favorite author and I wanted it right away.
You wanted it right away, okay, and you took it cheaper, mm-hmm.
It was convenient, cause I don't order anything online. I'm not a online shopper.
I have trouble seeing, so if I read for twenty minutes, it starts getting blurry, so. Then I started actually listening to audiobooks when I was doing chores too, working outside, pulling weeds and that were boring. But then, you know, now I just kinda listen.
I get a lot of my books on my Kindle, I do a lot of reading, you know, that way. And, and, and part of it is, it's, I mean, talk about convenient, you order it and it's there in like sixty seconds. But also, I also like the fact that I'm not adding more and more and more stuff into my, my shelves.
Yeah, that's true.
I, and a funny story about that, I remember, I, I once took a, a seminary course down at, at, um, United Lutheran Seminary in Philadelphia, and we were, the place the course was meeting in was the, I can't remember the name of the room, but it, it was named after some theologian who had left all of his books to the seminary. And this room on three of the walls was just bookcases of, his whole library, you know, not, not stuff he had written as well as the stuff he had read. So it was kinda neat to be surrounded by all this stuff, and I thought, you know, if I end up being a famous theologian someday and leave my, you know, books to the seminary library, what they're gonna have, end up having to do is just take a Kindle and nail it to the wall. I don't have a library, I'm not building a library like this the way people used to, and, um, you know, in some ways that's good, in some ways it's not as good, but that's where, that's where I am.
I like that with audiobooks too.
Yeah, it takes no space, I, 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 I love not taking up space.
Cause then I hate to get rid of them once I buy them too, or if I share them with somebody, that's okay, but.
My family was so mad at me when I had to move.
Oh.
I had to give books away and donate something they threw away, but, oh my god. And I still, you know, my Kindle's got like a couple thousand on my Kindle.
Yeah. I know, it's, it's, it's become, um, I don't know, I'm taking us off topic here, but it's, it's become an interesting question now, what happens to your Kindle library when you die? Can you leave it to someone? Like that's actually, like, there's, there's a, an open question on copyright and stuff.
It's not like a copyright.
Yeah, it's like, like what, what is, you know, can you, uh, because normally, let's like, you know, when my, when my father dies, I'm gonna get his whole library, you know, which is good in one way and is a pain in another way, but, um, but what if it's all online? Do you get it, do you not? It's kinda, it's an if illegal question right now.
My kids would probably go, delete.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, they're not interested in the same things, yeah, absolutely. Um, so, you know, that was a way into, kinda what, what this chapter seemed to be about for me is about thinking about how we're shopping. It's not, it wasn't about, I, I didn't think it was about, you know, how much are you spending? And don't spend as much and be simpler, it's more, how are you shopping? Not that one way is necessarily better than the other, but are you thinking about it? Are you being intentional about it? So, and, uh, you know, she wonders how much of our shopping is, is, is all about convenience? And, um, and if there's a way we can move from convenience to intentionality. So you, you mentioned the coffee shop. She says a story about a coffee shop arrista who remembered her the second time she, she went in there. That experience that helped her to feel like she belonged somewhere after she moved to a new state. Have you ever had the experience like that?
Sure.
You probably do, they probably know you.
You wanna share?
You know, to me, shopping is a social event.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I shop and I talk to people, whether they're strangers, and most likely they are strangers. But, uh, you know, very rare do I go into a store where they really know me, because it's usually Boscovs or TJ Maxx or Marshall's, so you really don't get to know the, the people that work there. I just find it funny, yeah.
When I was camping over, uh, across the river there, I'd go to Marshall's all the time. And they got to know me, they, they, oh, the cheese lady's here, they don't, they have Vermont sharp cheese, really good. And I always, cause if you're invited to another campsite, well, I go over and I get a block of cheese and then they have the big pickles in the barrel, get a couple pickles, slice them up, you're ready to go. Convenience, but still, that, they called me the, the cheese lady. Cheese lady's here, did you want bacon today too? They, you know, they kinda, kinda know. But those people don't work there anymore, that store's been there a hundred and four years.
Is it really? Wow.
They have a big sign in front of the deli.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's really something. And where is that?
Uh, right down on forty-six a little ways, like, well, the campground was three miles from the Portland Bridge and then it was really low there.
You're talking about that produce place?
Yeah, you could walk from the campground, but then you couldn't get back home, cause you buy too much. They have all the fresh stuff, you know, yeah.
I remember when the AMP used to be down in Bangor.
Oh, yeah, you knew everybody.
We knew everybody there, you know, all those people that worked there and they were always friendly.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And, um, also I'm from a small town in Massachusetts, um, you know, you go to the post office to get your mail and, you know, then you spend up talking to everybody that comes in while you're there and the postmistress and all of that.
I used to, the neighbor, you had to have a key for the mailboxes. I'd get the, when I lived down on Blaine Street and we, I'd walk up to the post office, neighbors would give me their keys so I'd get their mail, cause, you know, they're working or something, and then I'd, when I was a kid, I could just deliver it. Tiny little, it's a tiny little house in East Bangor that was a post office.
Yeah, I remember that place, Mason, Mavis was the postmaster too, oh, that was later probably.
Yeah, I can see the postmistress garden, I don't remember what his, his name was, but, yeah, it's, it's, you know, the, there's a fence around that little building now, and then they also built upstairs, it's a little, I don't know if it's a house or two apartments or what, but.
Oh, might be different, cause there used to be like a little grocery store there, the one I'm thinking of in East Bangor, was a grocery store and the post office part of it, the Mavis's.
Yeah, that was on, down further on Central Avenue, yeah.
And they always knew you.
Good times, yeah, yeah, I remember Mavis down there.
Yeah.
But that was after the original little one, yeah.
So, um, on page seventy-two. Um, I think it's two. Again, it's the first full paragraph there. "The choice to prioritize convenience is a choice to deprioritize the human side of shopping." "I put convenience in my online shopping cart, but I add unintended items to my basket too." What do you think she's talking about there? The unintended items that she adds to her basket.
Things that you weren't planning on buying, I'd say.
Okay.
You know, you're like, you have your list, I do, and then I go in and I'm like, oh, that looks kind of cool.
And that's on sale today.
Yeah. They add more stuff in.
Would be good for dinner, yeah.
I have that at the grocery store.
Don't go to the grocery store if you're hungry. I learned that a long time ago.
Maybe she's referring to the distractions of life.
Okay. Well, let's see what she says here. She says, "I choose the ease of the digital shopping cart, but in so doing, I watch as my dollars leave my local community. I don't intend to shop in a way that enables unjust retailers to use child labor or pay unjust wages. But the more I purchase certain products, the more these retailers will continue their practices in order to make a sale." And why are some things so much cheaper than others? That's often why.
Cheap labor.
Yeah.
There are a lot of people, like at Wakemans, you see, we have a lot of people that walk around and do the shopping for people all day because that's their job. You know, and then, you know, when it gets delivered to the people, the people come and curbside and pick the stuff up. My daughter does that all the time. You know, and I, I don't know, I like going shopping, picking out my own stuff. Plus, you're paying, you know, you have to give that person a tip. Sometimes there's a fee, you know. But when I first read, when you read that first sentence about deep, who I don't know. Getting really the human part is like, the one store, a couple of them, you walk in, there's no cashiers anymore. You check yourself out.
There is no human side to it.
Yeah. And then there's a couple of people, like stock the shelves or something.
But some of those stores are experiencing a lot of theft.
Yeah, you have to.
Dollar General in Bangor, the new one?
Oh, yeah.
I would, I read it on Facebook.
They don't have enough workers in there, you know.
Actually, I was just sitting there yesterday and although all the self-checkout things all had red lines on them, you can't use them, you could only use the one, yeah.
And they know that the people are, they're gonna prosecute us.
Would you remember when you used to walk in a store and people would actually come up to you and say, can I help you? Do you need help finding something? And they're, they do that still in Ace Hardware. Like, you walk in and somebody will often come up to you and say, do you need help finding something?
I did that at Wakemans.
Yeah, you're lucky to find somebody who works there in some of the stores.
I try leaving the store when I clock out and people are coming up, can you help me find this? And I'm walking all around the store.
Well, I am not a shopper, so I hate shopping. And actually, I'm not even sure I hate shopping as much as I hate the idea of shopping or the time that shopping takes. Like, once I'm in the store, I'm okay. It's not like I can't be in the store and shop. But it doesn't matter whether it's groceries or clothes or like, like, I just don't like how long shopping takes. And, but yet, I don't want to pay to have somebody else do it for me. I'm like, it's my job, I gotta go do it. But I am not a shopper, yeah. So, in fact, we used to, I used to put off grocery shopping so long that my husband started doing it for a while. But when I retired, I was like, okay, if I'm not working, I have to go do it.
I was just thinking, things that I buy on Amazon, a lot of times don't fit or they're not what I think they are. So they know me over at the grocery store when I take them out.
Oh, okay.
Which store do you go to? Which, I return?
En Rosetta.
Oh, there's a store like that?
Yes, yeah, it's right on.
I used to go to 248.
Oh, yeah.
It's called the Mailroom.
Yeah, the Mailroom.
It's, when you go into Rosetta, it's right on the right. It's a one-story, like, tan brick building. It used to be the district office.
I wonder if a lot of people think of that store as the Amazon Returns Store. I wonder if they get more business for that than anything else. They might, they might.
They sell coffee there too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they have two big beautiful dogs.
I was gonna say, they have two dogs in the corner.
Yeah, big, huge dogs and they just lay there.
Yeah. And then, well, I don't shop online or return anything there, but when I did the Kohler Guard, I had to take the box there. I don't know that they like those, but, you know.
As long as it's in the box.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, because that's a, that's a time essential, you might not admit it here. But it's convenient that it's there. Yeah.
I think with COVID, I did more shopping online.
Oh, gosh, I loved it.
And so you kind of do it and then you get used to doing it. But I can't say that's the best experience that I have.
I was looking at the copyright date of this book. It's copyright 2021. So I'm gonna guess, just knowing how long it takes to get published. She probably had this written before COVID started, so.
And there were some parts where she mentioned.
Oh, did she?
Pandemic.
Well, then she got it published quick then, okay.
Where that was, I remembered that. But she could have had, you know, she could have had a lot of it already written, but I.
She could have shaved it.
I forget where it talked about, a little bit about the pandemic, so.
Because I think, I mean, that changed it completely for so many of us. And for some of us, we loved it, and for some of us, it drove us nuts because we, that's important.
Nuts? Didn't bother me.
And I think, Mary, I think, you know, a lot of what she's talking about here is making it intentional. And I think, I think you do shop intentionally. You know, you really know what you're doing and you go out there and it's not about, you know, what's most convenient for me. It's not about what's cheapest for me. It's about, it's about something other than that.
I love shopping.
And I'm glad someone does because I don't either, Cam.
And I talk to people in the grocery store. You know, they're maybe looking for something, you know, and then they pick something. Well, the yogurt, well, I bought yogurt the other day and the lady reached in alongside me. She picked up some packaged yogurt gophers or some shit. These are really good. I'm, well, then I'll try them, you know. And I, I, but, yeah, or I've even shared recipes in the store. So, yeah. When they're a simple recipe and they only take four things, you can do that.
That's kind.
Actually, the one store I do like shopping in is like the craft store, like Hobby Lobby or when Michael's was around. That was the only store I like shopping in.
I agree.
Like, I love walking around the craft store and looking at stuff, but.
When it, like, if you shop local, you usually see somebody you know.
So there was a story in here about when April wanted to sew a skirt. And she realized that the cost of supplies for the skirt was going to cost significantly more than just buying the finished skirt in the retail store. And that, you know, kind of highlighted the disparity between what things cost and what they are worth. Have you ever encountered that in your life?
Absolutely. I used to sew all the time for myself and for my kids. And then, before you know it, the fabric was more expensive than buying it already made. Maybe not the workmanship was as good, of course.
And why do you think that is? You know, how could a finished product cost less than the materials for it? You know?
Cheap labor.
China.
Yeah, how many things now just say assembled in USA?
When I was losing all that weight last year, I hated buying new jeans. So I would take my size 12 jeans and take them in, take in the waste. But I kept doing it over and over because I just didn't want to buy new jeans.
Yes, yeah.
But I just broke down.
Well, especially not if you're still in process of losing. Like, when you're done, fine, but, yeah.
I'm pretty much done. I just donated all my size, but I don't know if they're gonna fit people because they're all taken in.
They're not the size it says on the tag anymore, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, I just hated doing, as much as I liked to shop and I loved those jeans and I just. But then, you know, the more you take it in and the seams aren't straight, they lose their shape.
So, you know, and I think, you know, there's also, you know, examples of, you know, some big-box stores that don't pay their workers, you know, appropriately. And that's how they can keep prices down. I mean, how many of our choices that we make are to find the cheapest price there is? And I guess the question here is, is that always the right choice? You know, what are we, what unintended things are we getting in our basket when we do that? When we just look for cheap, cheap, cheap?
Well, I look at, every time somebody goes on strike, whether it's Boeing Now or the local butcher's in the local, I mean, twice or wherever, they want more money. But bottom line, don't they know it's coming from the general public to start with? The employer's gonna pass it off on us.
Right, they have to.
So it's a vicious circle. But, you know, where, where does that end? You know, what, did the dock workers, now they get $63 an hour?
That's the best job in the world, I think.
Any prices that go up, you know, anyway, you know, it comes back to the consumer, no matter what it is.
Well, I mean, I can say one of the choices I make is related to coffee. I buy fair trade coffee, which costs more. It's, I mean, there is definitely cheaper coffee available, but fair trade coffee is coffee that is, comes from collective farmers, you know, that you know they are actually getting decent ways.
Do they sell K-cups?
They do.
They do?
Where do you buy that from?
Well, you can get it through Equal Exchange is one way to do it for, you know, with, through. Well, I get online, I order it online, but, yeah. And sometimes I just get new and zones, you know, from the store, which is also, you know, they do good things with their profits. But, you know, but I don't make that choice with everything. You know, there are some things I get because they're cheap. And, you know, it's kind of like the difference in organic vegetables and regular vegetables. Organic vegetables are more expensive because they're farmed in kind of the traditional way that kind of takes care of the earth and, you know, makes sure that things can keep going. Whereas, you know, factory farms have found really great ways of cutting corners and, you know, and making things really, really cheap. But at what cost? You know, and I think, it just, you know, I try to think those things through. That sometimes it's worth it to spend a little more. But that's challenging. That's challenging.
Like Walmart, they keep going after their vendors to lower the prices so that they can keep their prices in Walmart. But then, by lowering the prices at the vendors, a lot of those vendors went out of business because they couldn't make the product cheap enough.
It gets very complicated then. And what seems to be good for people, you know, is not necessarily good for everyone.
Sometimes some of these vendors will, especially with food products, they'll keep the price the same, but the packaging is smaller.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Girl Scouts have done that. I'm like, come on, I'd rather spend $10 for the same box of cookies I used to spend $5 for than spend $5 for like this, you know, but.
Or the pound of coffee that has been 12 and 13 ounces for years.
Yeah, yeah, and they keep the price the same because, but then, you know, what happens then is there's more and more packaging because then you have the same box for, you know, you have to buy more often, and that's not good for anybody either.
Yeah, ice cream is three quarts now instead of, or three, whatever. Yeah, doesn't make a.
Yeah.
Three fourths of a quart.
There's a reason the Marshall stores have been over there for 104 years. It's, they cost more, but it's fresh stuff.
Exactly.
It's right there in the farm.
It's probably not the cheapest you can buy, yeah, because it's.
No.
You're getting quality.
Yeah, yeah.
They do have jarred peaches though and pears that they branded. They're like $14 for a quart.
Wow.
But I get it every once in a while because I can have two peaches on ice cream. I can get like three servings out of a jar. And they're from the Lancaster area, but, yeah. Yeah, you can see there's stuff growing right there, tomatoes, potatoes, all kinds of beans.
Yeah, that's my garden.
Well, when they told about the asparagus in here, yeah. I used to just go and pick it and have it for dinner.
Yeah, fresh.
Just go pick like 10, 12 pieces, yeah.
I was thinking about this parable here. And thinking about how kids tease all the time until they, I don't know. For some reason, my daughter was saying, you know, her, they, kids, they, they don't like the answer. If the answer's no, and they want it to be yes, they keep being persistent and.
Yeah, persistence can go both ways, I guess, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, kids have a way of doing that. They could just, you know.
Where you don't.
Where you don't, just like, yeah, just like.
Vine, 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 whatever.
Especially my kid, you know, he came from a divorced family, so, you know, I gave in to him even more.
So let's talk about persistence a little bit. On page 79. The last paragraph on 79. "When the disciples asked Jesus how they ought to pray, he taught them the Lord's Prayer. And this prayer was intended not only to teach us how to pray, but also to change the way we live. In the prayer, we pray for God's kingdom to come and for God's will to be done on earth as it is in heaven. And who has God called to do God's will? And bring glimpses of the reign of God here on earth." That would be us. So when we pray, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, we're saying, change us. And who is to forgive our debtors?
We are.
You know, as we forgive those who trespass against us is the way we say in the Lutheran Church. You know, that's us. Jesus taught us to pray bold prayers in faith because prayer makes a difference. But he also taught us to pray bold prayers so that we might find the courage to live with the same kind of boldness with which we pray. Have you ever had an experience where a prayer changed the way you live? Where you kind of heard yourself praying something and realized, oh my gosh, that means I have to do something different?
I think prayer has changed me in the last 10 years, 12 years. I'm not the person I was then. I'm a more giving person. And I think that's because of prayer because I asked the Lord, you know, to have His Holy Spirit guide me. So, yeah, you know, yeah, I think prayer has helped me.
I think with acceptance is one of the things that helped me with because, you know, you keep wanting this person to change or the circumstances to change or person to live and your, you know, you just have to accept God's will. Even though you work to, you're working all the time to make it change, but you don't have that power.
I don't know if I'd call it prayer, but a lot of times I'll say something like I'm talking to God in my head. And then something will pop into my head that's completely different or, and I'm like, okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying. You know, that's God's answer. I make that on my work, you know.
Well, I think that's through paying attention, you know. And the one part of prayer that we so often forget is, you know, we describe prayer as a conversation with God, but we so often forget that a conversation involves talking and listening. Because God doesn't speak to us the way we speak to each other, so we are, it's just, it's so easy to forget that. I forget it all the time. Sounds like you had, you heard it. You hear it sometimes.
My moving had, you know, I knew what I had to do, but yet, you know, we need the comfort and encouragement, you know, to do it on your own. we need the comfort and encouragement, you know, to do it on your own.
And I think this discussion of convenience is, is, is more than just about shopping. I think it's about, you know, how often do we make decisions in our lives? Just make the quick, easy decision, do, like, just, is it more convenient to just play a video game right now instead of, you know, pulling a book out or whatever? You know, how often do we make all kinds of decisions based on just convenience rather than intentionality? And I know in my life, I do it a lot. I can grow a lot in that. How about the rest of you?
Well, sure. If you're going out for the day, you're gonna make the rounds that are, you can do it all in one day. And you should try, don't, don't go here today, there tomorrow. Try to put it together for your convenience. But then that would allow you time to maybe do something different. Like, my chan, plans changed this morning. And thought, well, I'll go see Charmaine today. And Sherry can't go.
Yeah. And sometimes I think, you know, like, um, you're looking for something, you want something, and right away, I think, oh, Amazon probably has it. And I sit there and I'm scrolling hours and hours, it seems, you know, and then sometimes I buy it. But then other times, I think, well, this is something, I could just go out to the store and there it'll be, you know? Why sit there and go through Amazon? And sometimes, you luck out, it's cheaper or may better. You know, when you have it right away, Amazon, you have to wait a day or two, you know? Sometimes they say, oh, you can get this the same day or next day. Then you get an email, bing, it's coming late.
Yeah.
You know, you don't get it anyway, you know? So there's a decision, should I just go out and get it? Or should I be, sit here in my chair and do it?
Yeah, and I, I, you know, a lot of what I hear in this book is a call to mindfulness. You know, to be, just be mindful about whatever you're doing. It's, it's gotta go, it's gotta be better, even, you know, even if that doesn't change the choice you were gonna make. You know, if, if, if you're, if you're scheduling your whole day in such a way, well, I'm just gonna do this because it's easiest to go this, 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 be done. Stop and think, well, is that how I wanna do this? Is this the, is this gonna be the most helpful thing? And maybe you'll choose the same thing, but you'll go about it in a more mindful way and be, you'll be paying attention in a different way, I think. Same thing with shopping, you know, I don't know what the right answer is in terms of, you know, Amazon, local, big, you know, I don't know, but maybe it's just thinking about it gets us more, um, you know, aware of these things. Some, this sounds so stupid, but, but one thing that I have been doing lately, I, you know, we, we do order a lot of Amazon in my house, and we have Amazon Prime, you know, which you pay for, and then you get free shipping and all this stuff. Well, if you order with Amazon Prime, it usually gives you like two options of when it's gonna be delivered. You can either have it delivered in the, the one or two days, which, you know, you pay for, or you can have it delivered on Amazon Day. Everybody has their own Amazon Day, like ours is Monday. And it's, 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 what they explain it as is it's designed to be, you know, that way, there will, it'll be like a fewer deliveries, and, and so the carbon footprint will be less. Like, you'll get, whatever you order during the week, it'll all come then on Monday. And I have actually, I've started to do that most of the time now, is just choose the Amazon Day delivery, because I think, you know, I, I really don't need this tomorrow. And, um, and then I do end up, and then I think about ordering something else later in the week. Oh, yeah, and I can get that ordered at the same time and not make them stop at my house over and over and over again. And it's, it's been good to realize, like, you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna be waiting six days for this, and that's okay, you know? And I remember, you remember back when, when there used to be all these things you could order on, on the television? You call 1-800-whatever? And it always said at the bottom, allow four to six weeks for delivery? Four to six weeks!
You forgot your...
But I remember, it always said that, and like, that's not, not what we're ready for now.
And I think I read or heard somewhere, like, those, those delivery drivers, they're not supposed to come, like, in a big driveway or anything, they're supposed to, that's why they're always parked on the street, because it takes more gas to go and time to go in and out. But it's okay if they park on 611 and it's, you know, inconvenient for traffic, but, yeah, yeah.
We have a ban, a mailroom in the apartment building, and I always say, this should be the Amazon room.
Yeah.
Almost every day you walk in, there's boxes piled all over Amazon and, uh...
And, and your other delivery people, like, like I have Ehrlich, and then the oil man comes. You would think they could, because I always ask them, but I know when, um, can't you come to the same area the same day? "No, you're not on that cycle." Well, the company should put them on that cycle so that, you know, you're not coming back three days later to do the same thing, you know?
Makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense to us, but not to the companies, I guess.
Logistics is a big deal. I remember when, um, you know, I think, I think school bus companies have a major, you know, you know, thing to, to figure out, how, how do we do these routes the best way? And when they, when they switched, um, the way this school district worked a couple of years ago, you know, it used to be the Five Points and Washington were both K through four, and then they fed into DeFranco Elementary. Now, Five Points Elementary is all the K-1 and 2 in the whole district, and Washington is all the 3 and 4. So it, it used to be that, you know, half the district got bussed out to Five Points, half got bussed to Washington, and then everybody got bussed, you know, to the middle school. That bus company must've had to pull their hair out, because then now they have to bus everybody.
Everywhere.
Everywhere, yeah. And, and you could take the Five Points and the DeFranco kids, you know, together, but now the Wash, it's, it's... But that's, the logistics like that are huge. They, I'm sure they have a computer program that helps some of that, but... So, so, uh, the last, we're actually, we're actually finishing this chapter.
Wow.
Wow. So, but one way, one thing that, that Chances here with is, convenience urges us to be impulsive. Intentionality encourages us to wait and be deliberate in what we do. And, um, so what are some practical ways you can, can foster that intentionality in our lives?
I think I'm more, I have to be impulsive when I go to a store, because I know I can get it on Amazon whenever I want it, so let, don't order it today, let me get it when I want it. But if I'm at the store and I see it and I'm like, I'm gonna get that now, because that might not be here when I come back.
Yeah, yeah. Interesting.
Not that I go to the store that much anymore, but...
There's somebody from Evergreen that works over at Weis, and I'm not always over there on a Tuesday, and she's already said to me...
Is that Frida?
Yeah. Why, why, you should've come on Tuesday. I said, "I'm here now." Another trip. I had a dentist appointment or whatever, "I'm here now." So then, you know, rather than coming home and going back and inconvenience myself.
Right.
If I'm in the area, that's where I shop, I don't branch out unless necessary. Like, I'm just saying, if that's necessary.
I like that.
Yeah.
One thing we do with, um, with kids, especially with Ben, that maybe we should do in our adult lives, too. You know, Ben has some money, both my kids have money, you know, from, you know, from whatever directions they get their money from, but, um, but he always wants to spend it on video games. That's, that's what he wants to spend, and it's his money, so, you know, we allow it. But, but whenever he wants a new video game, as soon as he tells us he wants a video game, that starts a 24-hour waiting period. And if he still wants it after 24 hours, yes, he can spend his own money on that. But we don't let him spend his own money, because he may have just seen an ad for it or something, and then a couple hours later, he'll think about something else. So we give, we give him this 24-hour waiting period. And, you know, I wonder if that's something that maybe Heather and I ought to do in our own lives, too, you know?
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe I should do that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, because that, that, that just kinda forces you to be a little more intentional about it. It's like, think about it, like, just, just think, do you really, really need it? And especially, we get, the video games we get are just downloaded, so it's not, you know, whenever you get, buy it, you get it. But, you know, that, that just forces Ben to think through, is this a good use of my money? And maybe we could all grow in that way, I don't know.
Good suggestion.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know about other families, but I know, like, my son-in-law and daughter, and sometimes I do it. You know, you're up late, can't sleep, what do you do? You go on Amazon. And then you're like, why did I buy it? And like I say to her some of the things, like, you spent your money on that, you know? She's like, "Well, I was up late, I couldn't sleep."
Shopping therapy.
Yeah. Well, I have to get going, because George will be here.
Yeah, well, let's, let's wrap this up then. And because we got through the end of this, my question for you is, um, what do you hope to write with you from this? Learning and reflection. So take a moment and write that down.
Wait 24 hours.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So we'll go shopping tomorrow, not today.
All right, so, so next week, we'll look at chapters five and six. And, um, so let's, let's close with prayer. Invite you to repeat this prayer after me. "Thank you, Lord God, for food and for stuff."
Thank you, Lord God, for food and for stuff.
"Thank you, Lord God, that we have more than enough."
Thank you, Lord God, that we have more than enough.
"You call us to breathe, to slow down and ponder."
You call us to breathe and slow down and ponder.
"Forgive us whenever from your pulse we wander."
"Forgive us whenever from your pulse we wander."
Amen.
Amen.